Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we move on with roll call, we just want to report out of the closed session that was held tonight at 6:00. With respect to Item A, Conference with Labor Negotiator, the council was briefed and no reportable action was taken. With respect to Item B1, no briefing was given tonight. With respect to Item B2, email communication from California Department of Housing and Community Development, the council was briefed, no reportable action was taken. And with respect to Item C, no reportable action was taken after a briefing. We adjourned the closed session at 7:30, and we are now starting again. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Greg. All right, may we, we're going to call the meeting to order, may we have the roll call? Peggy?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Proton Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Here. Okay, we are fortunate enough to have the invocation this evening by Pastor Darrell Kelty, Temple City Community of Christ Church located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard. Welcome, Pastor.
It's always a pleasure to be here. O divine Father and Creator, we thank you that we are able to meet together this evening to conduct this, the business of the city of Temple City. We do so in order that we might provide direction to this community, so we might become even a better community than it already is. We know that this will not be an easy task when one considers all of the problems and difficulties we face, but we know, Sir, and recognize that with your faith in you, that we indeed will progress in a way you would have us to do under your guidance. It's for this reason that we offer this prayer this evening. May we always, the world around us, this community, be under your divine creation and your caregivers. Therefore, let us say our prayer this evening, that through what we do here tonight, tomorrow, and in the following days, and the day after that, we may tap into your direction, that we may leave this community a better community than we have found it to be. As we pray in all humility, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we don't have any ceremonial presentations tonight. We're going to move to public comment, and we have Jing Lee from our library.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Sternquist and the city council. It was very nice to see you as a soft opening, and I want to thank you for your continued support, not only just the Liu Li Renovated Library, but also our express library just coast as a beginning of this month. And, you know, the express library is more like, might be running for more than two years, and we're very lucky to have a size like express library while the library is still under construction. It's almost like a full-size library. Everybody was laughing. The only Temple City can do this. Other express library basically just have a computer, people grab their holds. We actually have our collection over there. So, thank you so much. We were very busy. We just finished our spring reading program at end of April. So, with that tightly library, we have, we end up with the third place in terms of registration. So, we have the third highest registration among the 18 libraries in central region. So, we did a very good job. So, you know, Temple City rocks. And as you know, the Liu Li Renovated Library is open today. So, our new hour will be, is Tuesday and Wednesday from 12 to 8, Thursday and Saturday, Thursday to Saturday is 10 to 6. And in addition to the books or division materials, we also have laptop chairs, study rooms, and also a computer for people to use. And this year, we were selected to host the library, the lunch and library program. So, that program is offer free lunch for the children at 10, 18, and under. It's going to be starting on June 14 and last until August 5. And it's every, it's Tuesday to Friday, 12 to 1, it's a grab and go. So, you just come in, and then we give you, you know, the food, you can just enjoy in the park and then come back to the library. So, that's coming. And also, we're launching our traditional summary discover program this year as well. So, it's going to start in June the 1st. And basically, you register for the program, you log in the book, you read, and also compute all the activities. You are able to get incentives and enter for monthly join, and this open for everybody. So, we encourage the whole family participate as well. And we're going to resume another program is called Smartypants Storytime. This is very popular, mostly just for baby and toddlers. So, that going to start at the end of June. So, more information will come in. So, please come by and visit us, and looking forward to see everybody over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jing. Okay, Dawn Taran?
Good evening. It's so nice to see you in person. Normally, I would be here with my troop of royal court, but this year, if you will see them at the parade luncheon, which will be taking place on Saturday. So, I'm here to talk about the Temple City Camellia Festival, the one that's going to happen in May. So, that will be this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The parade is Saturday at 10:00 a.m. We've got lots of fun surprises in the parade. We're going to have our Rose Princess will be in the parade from Temple City. We'll also have the high school soccer team, CIF champs, in the parade, and our grand marshals, Scott Takeda and honorary grand marshals, Bert Ferntile and Matt Byers, who were our grand marshals last year. And of course, our esteemed mayor will be joining us in the parade. In addition, we have entertainment going on all weekend, which is free. Saturday night is the Springsteen Experience, so if you're a Bruce Springsteen fan, come on out. I would encourage all of those who are interested in going on carnival rides to purchase pre-sale tickets and save yourself a few dollars. They are on sale online and at City Hall and Live Oak Park through Thursday. And all the information is available on our website. It's camelliafestival.org, and we are the city of small town but big dreams, and that's our theme this year. So, thank you for having me, and I hope to see everyone there.
Thank you, Dawn. The tickets are bought at City Hall?
You can buy the pre-sale tickets at City Hall.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, we move to Item 7, the Consent Calendar. And we need a motion?
Motion to approve consent calendar?
I am, okay, a second. I am going to abstain on Item D. The second reading and adoption of ordinance number 22-1061 related to the maintenance and landscaping of vacant sites. Do we have a roll call? Peggy, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. We move to Item 8, Public Hearing None. Unfinished Business None. New Business, a review of city council and ad hoc standing committees. And Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist.
And Greg, it has both of you listed.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. Before you, as a request of Mayor Sternquist to take a look at the ad hoc and standing committees, and if there needs to be any adjustments or additions to the ad hoc and standing committees, so just a basic review.
So, just a reminder for the council and the public, standing committees are committees of less than a quorum, so two members of the council. They operate pursuant to the Brown Act, and they're considered to have an indefinite duration. Ad hoc committees are also two members or less, special purpose with a shorter duration and a much more limited scope. A very kind of good example is the Audit Standing Committee is something that will go for as long as the council wants it to be there. The Commissioner of Recruitment Ad hoc Committee is something that gets put back in place every year as needed, and some years may not be needed. So, the ad hoc committees can meet without conforming to the Brown Act because their work is sort of rushed and of a very short period of time. Standing committees take more time to think but still represent less than a quorum. So, with that, I turn it over to the council, and I can help as needed.
Greg, when you say a shorter period of time, how, how long is the short period? Is it a year or less, or?
You know, it really depends on what we're talking about. I use the example of the Commissioner of Recruitment Ad hoc Committee. It was formed in March. I believe the work is done or almost done. The Primrose Park Art Element Ad hoc Committee has been going on for a longer period of time, but it had a very definite, definite scope of work. So, the fact that it went on for a longer period of time was not as concerning. In another city that I work with, they have a relationship with Metro because there's a rail line through the city. The ongoing relationship with Metro is a standing committee. Every once in a while, they'll have a need for, say, cleanup of trash or potential moving of homeless encampments on Metro property. That would be an ad hoc committee that might meet for three, four, six months. So, you want, really want to focus on, is there a definite and small scope of work? And then you want it to be something that isn't going to go forever. With Primrose Park, you know, essentially built out, the Art Element Ad hoc Committee may have a bit of work left, but I would imagine they wouldn't be here at this time next year, that that work will be done in the current year.
Okay, and for example, future development of city properties, standing committee. If I would like to make one specific to the Chamber of Property, would that be a new one, or would it just still fall under this?
It really could go either way. You could task that committee with working on the Chamber of Property, or if the committee is busy working on other city properties and you want a different kind of focus on the Chamber of Property, you could start a new ad hoc. Either one really works for something like that. If that committee is not currently incredibly busy, then you may just want to task the standing committee with that work.
Okay. So, Councilmember Yu and Councilmember Man are on that committee. I'm going to ask Councilmember Yu, would you mind if I formed a new committee to look at the Chamber site specifically?
Not at all.
Okay, and Councilmember Man, would you, or Mayor Proton, would you join me in that committee?
Yes, it would be my pleasure to.
So, that would be an ad hoc committee, correct?
So, I believe what you're asking for is an ad hoc committee for development of the Chamber of Commerce site on Las Tunas, and it would be yourself and the Mayor Proton.
Yes.
Okay.
That's perfectly fine. That committee will have a bit more flexibility. As an ad hoc committee, the meetings will not have to be noticed. But again, you know, after a year, it should be reviewed as to where are we? Are we meeting regularly? Is that singular focus still driving us? If so, keep it in place. If after a year, the work's done or almost done, then the council can see if it's still viable a year from now. Really checking up every year or so is the minimum that we'd want to do.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. And then, I know Councilmember Chavez and I have expressed in the past just our interest in code enforcement in Temple City, and specifically looking at some different ideas, and I was wondering if Councilmember Chavez, you thought it might be a viable idea to have an ad hoc with you and I on that, if you thought we need?
Sure.
Okay. So, could we do that, Greg, also, or?
Sure. So, code enforcement as a topic is pretty broad. Are there things sort of that we want to drill down to really make it a true ad hoc?
I think specifically how we can, because we are a small city and a small staff, and yet code enforcement, where the concerns come up that we hear about it, have to do with property. Property owners that are not taking care of their property, vacant properties, that type of thing. Properties, for example, with people who are renting them is Airbnbs. So, specifically, I think the repercussions of that, how those yards are maintained because they're not taken care of as well as someone who is a permanent resident. So, I think it would be in, looking specifically at, with a small staff, how do we best utilize the systems we have in place, whether that's a reporting system that, you know, maybe can be enhanced online, or community engagement? I'm thinking something in, in that arena.
Mayor Sternquist, if I, if I may suggest, if the city attorney and I can kind of think about this one a little bit?
Okay.
And make some suggestions, and then, then you can bring it back at a few, at a next meeting?
And then we can see, it's, the idea is fantastic, but whether it's a standing committee or an ad hoc, I think.
And then if, I mean, I think both Councilmember Chavez and I would be fine with the parameters being set what you think would best help.
Right.
And would part of that perhaps be looking at the current ordinance and stuff that we have to see? Because I know in the past, we have been looking at them, and, and Scott's done a really good job.
And those, and those would be the things we would want to kind of define a little bit more. So, one, all of your colleagues know kind of what the parameters of what you're working with are under, and also, two, and I understand the frustration, when we have, for example, active code enforcement cases, there is some protection because they, there is due process rights for those individuals through that process that we have to make sure that we're protecting as we go through our enforcement actions. So, but I think it would help if we kind of, if you don't mind, Mayor, kind of define that a little bit more, bring that back to the council, so it's very kind of explicit to the council and explicit to the, to.
And I think that would be helpful, maybe one thing that the ad hoc could look at would be to educate all of the council as to where we're at and what we're doing and what, where we could maybe move. So, so that, more of a, as, as most ad hoc committees are, most advisory type of committee to set up to the council. But yeah, I agree with you. Let's, let's flesh out what the parameters would be. Because I think, to me, it's like, almost, I don't want to get into what staff does.
Right.
Okay, and that'd be my concern, that's right. Because you and staff are the ones who primarily are in charge of that, obviously, and I don't want to cross that threshold as well. So, whatever, whatever you guys are comfortable with, that's fine.
And Brian, ad hoc committees are open to the public, correct?
They do not necessarily need to be open to the public. No, then generally, our practice has not been.
To have them.
They are, they are internal meetings as opposed to what Greg described as standing committee meetings, and what those, what those entail, and the requirements for noticing and participation by the public are.
Yeah, and I definitely would start off as an ad hoc and a standing.
And I think what's been driving this also is I've received not even complaints, but more suggestions from some residents that they have some ideas, but they don't serve on a commission, they're not on city council, and they're just, I have some ideas for code enforcement, how we can help, and, you know, I'm willing, but they, willing to listen, but I think it's, it would be at some point, I've invited them to come and share that, to call you, Brian.
Sure.
But I know it's something that Tom and I have frequently spoke about, about how can we, as a council, help code enforcement? If there was any way that we could assist in looking at the ordinances or whatever policies that might be?
So, Mayor, if I may make one more suggestion, what we'll do, the city attorney and I and Mr. Reimers will sit down and, and talk, and then we will talk to you, and then we'll bring it back kind of fully to the council.
Okay, perfect.
And then, and then you obviously have the ability to, to create that ad hoc committee, and then it's, we, we have the parameters, and we kind of know what, for lack of a better word, what a work plan is going forward with it.
Right.
If that's, if that sounds okay.
Yeah, it sounds good. I mean, and if, if you come to the conclusion that you think it's not needed, then, okay, well, then it's, it's not needed. But I think it's just something that has been on my mind a lot in the, as soon as you become the mayor, you get a lot of emails.
I, I, my, my, my only suggestion is that the council understands the parameters of what, of what that would.
And maybe they, I mean, I'd be happy to get their input, too.
What I can do, Greg's concurrent here, if the individual council members want to give me some ideas without creating the consensus outside of the scope, just of what that, what that, what that it could include, and then I can bring that to both of you.
Right. And I think it's pretty specific to properties, Tom. I think that's what we've spoken about, that we get the complaints about the most and what we can do to improve that.
There is, I know of one other city that does this on the west side of Los Angeles that deals with a reporting on, they call them problematic properties. They have like a problem property list, and they say, and then they actually, they actually report back on a committee, it's like, okay, what's the progress on this property that's been this nuisance for whatever, whatever issues there are? And they kind of go back and forth, and they, they regularly report on that. So, that's, that's one, that's one suggestion, but I'm sure there may be others from the council, and we can, yeah, that would be great.
And then, maybe if, what would be helpful, I think, too, is just to kind of help with all the council being informed on what, I know we report out, but if we could maybe get some type of schedule as to how often each ad hoc is going to meet, so that we can continue to kind of move some projects along? I think it would be helpful.
Mayor, if you don't mind, the Las Tunas Downtown Revitalization Committee, which you and I are on. Do we even need that anymore? I mean.
I don't know. See, I didn't know how often you're meeting or.
When was the last time we met? I can't even remember.
It was before pandemic.
Yeah, certainly before pandemic, so. I, I, my, I would say at this point, let's, let it, let's just dissolve it, and if there's a need in the future, we can always recreate. I know we, we're going to have some future conversations about some of the ARPA money, things like that, which may include that, but that we can always address.
And, and you know, it may make sense to dissolve that standing committee tonight, and then as, when the ARPA matter is brought back to you, to at that point, create an ad hoc committee to deal specifically with the use of the ARPA.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
It also, just, I had mentioned it earlier, may make sense tonight to dissolve the Commissioner of Recruitment Ad hoc that was formed in March, if indeed that work is completed.
If, if we could. It's not quite over yet.
Is it not, not over yet?
No.
Yeah, well, we, we will report out, but I, I think we could suspend it next meeting.
Next meeting, got it. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, the, the Primrose Park, we're going to eliminate that one now?
I would suggest, I would suggest holding on to that, there's still work to be done.
I think we still have a little bit of work to do.
Okay.
Perhaps we, so let's save it for now, and maybe in a future meeting, we can dissolve that.
The art work is, yeah.
Yeah, they need to be all installed.
And Councilmember Viscara and I have not met on a homeless plan, and I forgot that you and I were both on that. So, what's your pleasure there? What should we do with this one?
I would suggest, because there is some, it's, it's been a long road, but there is some money coming through Measure H to, to cog. At least, at least a couple more months, and then, and then we can evaluate it, then you as the council can evaluate it from there.
Okay, and then E, Facilities, Public Works, are we, you still doing that?
We, we utilize that standing committee quite frequently throughout the years.
Okay. So, then C, I guess we're going to, oh, no, C is going to stay the same. We're going to eliminate B, the Las Tunas Revitalization.
If that's the pleasure of the council.
Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Peggy, you have that? Okay, I think that's it for those, then.
You do not need to make this in a form of a motion.
Okay.
Mayor Sternquist, if I could just add one comment, kind of similar to, as Mr. Cook mentioned, the upcoming discussion on ARPA funds could also guide sort of how the ad hoc or standing committees function. I would feel more comfortable for the Chamber ad hoc to, I guess we would really begin work after, full council has really discussed the scope of ARPA and our upcoming budget discussions. I think that would at least provide the parameters we would need to operate under. I, I think we could still form it now, but with an understanding that we'll be discussing that in the context of.
What funding is.
What funding is.
Okay.
So, that's on, form an ad hoc regarding the use of potential funding sources.
Yeah, I'm just, because we were talking about establishing the parameters of what an ad hoc would do. So, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify my understanding of the, of the ad hoc. Does that make sense to you?
Yes. Is there anyone who would like?
I just need a little clarification. Are you, we talking about forming ad hoc to inform the council of ARPA funding, or is it forming ad hoc after ARPA funding discussion had been had?
Well, I'm, I'm suggesting that the ad hoc operates from a reference point of when the council discusses ARPA and other matters. Because it, like, for example, if the ad hoc suddenly decide to meet before that discussion, then I think we don't have kind of clear guidelines as to how the ad hoc is supposed to function.
So, just form it now, so it's in place, we can.
I guess it's, it's up to you.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Does anybody want to do that? William?
I'm fine with it.
Fernando? You're, you know?
It kind of begs. It's your call. It's your call, as a mayor.
It kind of begs the question, though, if we're looking at these standing committee meetings, do we really still need the facility, no, the future development of city properties standing committee? Since, I mean, are there, are there any that we're thinking of developing at this point? I, I can't think of any offhand, and of course, that's going to also be tied into some of the ARPA funding discussions that we have. And that's why I'm thinking that, that standing committee meeting, as well as the revitalization standing committee, committee, those can, I think, go away now, and then reformed with more specific nature or vision, once we go over the ARPA. I mean, I, because I don't see either of those committees meeting in the near future. Vince, do you, what do you think?
Okay, so, looks like we're in agreement to eliminate B.
Future development?
Future development.
Okay.
Yeah. When, may I ask, Mayor, when are we planning on bringing the ARPA funding discussion to the council?
Thank you, Councilmember Yu. We are, we were planning on bringing that as part of a, a study session with the budget because they are really too conjoined together because, yes, and we're, we're looking, we're drafting the item right now, and we actually, you actually have a, you actually have a draft of the budget, we want to add that as part of the discussion. Because both are really interrelated into the decision-making process that you will have. We, so, I'll, I'll, I'll save the rest for, for a future meeting.
So, with that, Mayor, I would suggest we have the ARPA and the budget discussion as a group, and then that will inform you as to which ad hoc you would like to form after that.
Okay, so why don't we wait till after that for any other ad hocs?
That's, that's fine.
Sounds good. You're going to bring back information to Tom, Councilmember Chavez, and myself, and William and I are going to work on the Chamber site ad hoc.
After, but that will be after, after your discussion, so you know what priorities you're, where you're kind of using that ARPA funding, or what, however combination of funding you're looking for.
And then in the meantime, if you could be sure to send probably the whole council, but just information again on where we are and what we've done with the Chamber site, that would be very helpful to have a timeline, because I know we did have consulting, we did have some discussion on it, but it's been some time since we've talked about it.
It has been some time.
So, that would be helpful to just inform everybody of where we are on that.
Sure.
Especially now that the express library.
Is gone.
Is gone.
No, not a problem.
Okay, so we're good with that? And, let's see, the others, I think that's it for those. Okay, we move to Item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Viscara?
Eleven and 12.
What happened? Oh, what happened here? I don't have the, it's different page. I don't have the list, different page. Item 11, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, members of the council, one report tonight, Ms. Taren, I was already, let you know about, after two years, Camellia Festival coming back, so thank you, Ms. Taren, for that report, one report, I'll, I'll take, I'm just gonna take a couple minutes, because it is pretty important in terms of, not now, but in the future, I have the pleasure of serving on the County of Los Angeles Oversight Liability Trust Fund Board, essentially what that is, it takes care, and, and Councilmember Chavez plays a separate role with JPIA, so it's two separate roles and two separate bodies that, that actually process and deal with liability claims of LA County Sheriff's activity and LA County Public Works activity related to liability within contract cities, I bring this to your attention tonight, because usually we're just dealing with claims, but at our last meeting, what was a little bit unusual compared to prior meetings, was we buy insurance, so we buy what's called excess insurance, similar to how we work with JPIA for our liability insurance, according to JPIA staff, which is Jonathan Schull, who's the Executive Director of JPIA, who serves in a, JPIA serves as a consulting role to the Oversight Board of the County of Los Angeles, his, he and the, and his professional staff described to us in very stark detail what is happening in the liability insurance market right now, to where five years ago, the Liability Trust Fund, essentially to ensure all the contract cities, and all the Sheriff's Department activity, and all those cities, could pretty, not easily get insurance, but could get insurance, and I don't want to get too complicated about this, but about seven years ago, we were able to buy insurance, which allowed us to, we're a first dollar pool with, in terms of our insurance, meaning we pay nothing, we pay essentially, think of it like car insurance with no deductible, for insurance related to sheriff's activities, it's much higher, about six, seven years ago, it was 2.5 million, so, first claim up to 2.5 million, the pool carried all that, and then they would buy excess insurance on top of that, two years ago, that SAR, self-insured retention level, went to over 5 million, this last go-around for renewals, the brokers could not get anything above, of, a, 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 lower than 7.5 million, meaning that from five years ago, almost seven years ago now, where your deductible was 2.5 million, now it's 7.5 million, the other complicated factor, and this is, this was in a public meeting, is that the insurance layers are harder to buy, to the point at which we asked the question, and I usually don't ask, I ask questions, but I usually don't make a motion in those meetings, is I asked Jonathan Schull, how bad is this in terms of our actuarials that we'll have to do for future years to understand what our rate, where our rates are going, and he said it's going to be rough, to the point where we'll be able to buy insurance next year at a reasonable rate, and the answer was, that's, that's, that's up for debate, it, it may be really tough, to the point where some levels, we may not, we may not be insurable anymore, and I don't mean to be, this is part of the debate about Sheriff's Department or anything else, but it was, and so, at that meeting, I actually made the motion to bind the insurance for the, for the, for the pool at the highest self-insured retention level we've seen, at 7.5 million, and to at least get insurance going into next year, and it is questionable for fiscal year 23, 24, how much insurance that will, we will be able to buy, so I, I bring that to the council, because that was a pretty stark discussion that we're having, and it's, it is a public meeting, that was discussed openly, and the meeting notes are there, so I did want to bring that to your attention, that those elements of how we contract out with the cities, and you may see this with the Contract Cities Association, speaking of ad hocs, they talked about possibly creating some ad hocs to look at the contractual relationship between the County of Los Angeles, Sheriff's Department, and contract cities related specifically to the liability surcharge.
So Brian, I'm a little confused, so, we have insurance, liability insurance for our city through JPIA.
Correct.
We have liability insurance with the Sheriff's Department.
Correct.
That is part of the contract that we pay yearly.
Exactly.
So if something would happen, say, in our city with the Sheriff's Department, and our city would get sued, that's the protection we get from the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, absolutely, we are pooled together, similarly as we are general liability, with all of the other contract cities, if a contract, an event happens in a contract city, we're pooled together with all those contract cities as one, in one big pool.
And 7 million, or 7.5 million is, the cap is to what can be paid out by the insurance company, or that's how much is, it's costing?
So if a claim comes in, the pool is liable first dollar, so, dollar one to 7.5 million dollars per occurrence, which five, seven years ago, that was 2.5 million, it's, it's, and I bring it to your attention, I know it's a little dramatic, but it's, it's something that, it's, it's out there, it's, I just want to make sure you know, and I participate in that, on that board as well.
Okay.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Make a, also make a comment, also a question, comment is that that liability doesn't apply to just Temple City, because just like the city manager said, it, it's, could be any city got sued and pay out damage from this pool, and that would be payout from the entire pool, doesn't have to be our city, but we carry that liability because we're part of the pool, so that, that's one comment, but I do have a question, how big is a pool right now, how much money we have in the pool, if 7.5 million is a big number, how much money we actually have in the pool?
That's a great question, Councilmember you, and the actuarials that were done for the prior year, should, have, they have a confidence range, and Councilmember Chavez can talk about this on the general liability, so the, there is enough about, I think it's about 150 million right now, that's, that's cash on hand for the pool to have, so, their confidence level in the claims that they have, the claims that they know, what those potential payouts could be, what they reserve, they have enough cash on hand, so, from a financial standpoint, the pool is doing, is financially sound, so they, there's, there's no concern that, you know, there won't be payment of claims or anything like that, and that there won't be any hits for things that haven't happened, this is kind of looking prospectively at what may happen as to if the insurance market changes a little bit, but in terms of where we stand right now, where all the contract cities stand right now, with those liability claims, the, the, the pool is in a very good financial position.
Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
So, what is driving the fact that this, the first dollar limit just keep going up? Is it because there've been a lot of damages paid out from this pool?
I would have to defer to the insurance brokers and all those folks who would tell you what the market looks like, I can, I'll, I'll try my best to summarize what they, they would say, yes, there's been some high-dollar claims payouts, but the insurance market overall, to insure, and that's essentially why JPIA was formed, because individual cities on their own could not procure insurance, especially when they get, with one claim, the next year, they, they, they get swallowed up with huge increases, so that's one, yes, there is, there is the issue of claims, but the market as a whole has become much more difficult to procure that level of insurance, there's literally, and you can, it's in the meeting, there's only about four or five insurance firms in the world that insure this, hold these types of claims, I hope that answers your question, sir.
You know, to kind of add on, it's very similar to what we have in the city, of course, with CGPIA, but even though both are what we call risk pools, they're not, we're not insurance companies, but at the same time, they work like insurance companies in that they're, it is primarily claims-driven, the more claims, and the higher the cost, and particularly, unfortunately, from the liability standpoint, maybe not so much from the, from the sheriff's side of it, it's kind of a catch-22 in California, it's a great place to live, unfortunately, we have a lot of natural calamities, we have a lot of other issues to deal with, and frankly, the insurance companies are unwilling to write policies, even for these large risk pool companies, and it is, as, as Brian said, getting more and more difficult to, to, to find these policies, and to find underwriters for them, and it's just the nature, I mean, the wildfires, all the things that we've gone through in California have not helped, there's no question about it, and, and I guess the, the saving grace about this is, you know, both pools are looking for ways of, of keeping these costs down, obviously, a lot of it starts with keeping those claims down, and the more we can do that, and the better it's gonna be overall, not only for us, but the entire pool as well, so, it's, it's tough, it is getting tough out there, no question.
So as this progresses, I, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Well, I was gonna ask, because you mentioned, in the future, we might not be able to purchase insurance at a reasonable rate, or, or at all, I guess, what, what would that, what would happen theoretically in that situation?
That question was asked, it was, it's a complicated theoretical discussion, because apparently it did happen in the mid-'90s as well, there is option to self-insure, which probably won't be the best option at all, the, the, not as, not as Temple City, but as the pool, so they would just essentially absorb every loss of every claim, which would be pretty heavy, and we could see our liability surcharge, which currently is at 11%, go up, and probably go up substantially, but that would, it would be a significant and very complicated discussion with the County of Los Angeles as to what that relationship looks like, and that was openly discussed at the Oversight Board meeting, so, with that being said, I bring this, I, I let you know about this, too, so, and, that, I, I'll probably be bringing this up over the next year or so, obviously, and they, they're, they're trying to bind the coverage now, I'll, I'll come back to, and you may, as the council, because contract cities or others may want some representatives from contract, from fellow contract cities to participate in those discussions with the county in the future, so I bring that to your attention now, so that that may be something you want to be aware of, and it's, it's, it is important to the city, for sure.
Okay, anything else, Brian?
I think that's enough for me.
Okay, any updates from our city attorney, Greg?
Oh, just a brief one, after that uplifting discussion, there's a case that came out yesterday in Northern California, it's 110-page appellate court decision on the California Environmental Quality Act, and there were just parts of it that were interesting, because it, it appears that, at least in Northern California, and at least this court, they're starting to get a little fed up with what they term misuse of SEQA, the property in question, well, the timeline for the property in question starts in 1976, with a federal court judgment that it could begin to move forward, since that time, the owner of the property had never sought to build more than 43 single-family residential units on the, over 1,000 acres involved, the Environmental Impact Report was begun in 1995 or '96, depending on kind of what facts you used, was certified in 2017, so it took over 20 years to write the Environmental Impact Report, and it was over 900 pages, when the recommended maximum is 300, and now, obviously, it's 2022, five years later, and the court kind of goes through the background of SEQA, and that it's supposed to be noble, and it's supposed to, you know, make sure that impacts are studied and addressed, but that, and, and they quote Justice Chin, who said, "Rules regulating the protection of the environment must not be subverted into an instrument for the oppression and delay of social, economic, or recreational development and advancement," and in this case, the court actually took notice of the fact that it took over 20 years, because the governmental entity in charge required the developer to go back and study more, and go back and study more, and it, it took forever, and they said, "It must be tough enough when the opposition is private, however, when private opposition is joined with official hostility, SEQA becomes an even more fearsome weapon, and something is very wrong with this picture," so, whether the legislature will listen to the court or not, I don't know, but it, it, it may be that we're beginning to see some changes in the way that the courts deal with the Environmental Quality Act. And that's my report for tonight, as I noted, last time I was with you, I will have more from the City Attorney's Conference that I attended, and we'll roll that out kind of over the next few meetings, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings, did we have any?
Yeah, yeah, Councilmember Viscar and I are, would like to report out on the Commissioner Recruitment Ad hoc, so in essence, we received three total applications, if, if I remember correctly, Ms. City Clerk, three total applications for the vacancy on the Transportation and Safety Commission, and since we don't have that many applications, and Councilmember Viscar and I have looked through them, we figured we can just jump right to full council interview, instead of having to go through the ad hoc ones, and then having to go through city council.
So, Peggy, you're gonna give a date on that coming soon?
If it's the will of the council to, to interview all three applicants, and yes, I will send tentative or possible dates for the interview.
I think in the past, we've, with, when we're faced with that small group, we've tried to schedule it like right before a council meeting, or something like that, which might work for, better for us.
With full council, or just one?
I thought we were gonna do the full council, right?
Yeah, full, full council.
Yeah, so we would, for example, I think in the past, we've scheduled the interviews like maybe at 6 o'clock on the evening of a, of a council meeting, or 6:30, if that's, I mean, that's just what we've done, we can do it any, whatever your pleasure is, but rather than having a special meeting to do that, you know, that's, I remember we've done that before.
Yeah, if, if we can make the schedule work out.
Yeah.
Have there been any, Peggy, so you'll get back to us, have there been any school district proposed times for upcoming meetings to get together?
You mean the standing committee?
The standing committee.
Haven't heard any.
No.
Have you?
When does the school year finish, is it?
You believe that graduation is the second week in June, sure?
Second week of June.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, that might, yeah, I think for, for that one, we should probably follow, because I recall the last discussion, we were supposed to schedule something for end of April, and I think we passed that.
Yeah, we're, we're getting to the point now where we get to the end of the school year, they disband basically for the summer, and we're not looking at another standing committee meeting until September, October, I would prefer to do one before that, if we could.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
If anything, just to get a kind of recap of the year, and what's going on, and things like that, so maybe you could, I'll put that.
You know, I, I guess I just read the superintendent's recent report, and I didn't realize that you can now become just a virtual student through Temple City School District, I was surprised to, to see that, so you have hybrid option, in-school option, and now you can be an online student.
It's, it's very odd, I, I have a friend whose daughter is enrolled in exactly that, and their hours, even though they're in the same grade as, as my son, their hours are different, so I, I don't exactly know why it's that way, though, so I think like, my, my son gets off of school at 2:30, and the online one, I think they get off at 12:30, and then supposedly, the remaining time is for self-study, yeah.
Are the committee meetings online, or in person?
We've, the last, Zoom, yeah, we haven't met in person for a while.
But, but having said that, I know Mr. Murphy asked about disbanding the Commissioner Recruitment, I, I think we were done after that report, right?
Okay, so we'll eliminate that one also.
You mean after we select?
Well, I, I think the, the ad hoc, you and I, our job is done, because it's coming to full council, yeah.
Okay, any others?
No request, thank you.
Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda, Councilmember Viscara?
Well, I'm preparing for this coming weekend, it's gonna be busy, between the city stuff and Kiwanis stuff, we'll, we'll be well represented. stuff and Kiwanis stuff, we'll, we'll be well represented.
Are they doing the pancake breakfast?
No.
Okay, yeah.
Just, just, uh, cotton candy.
Um, for breakfast?
If you show up, I'll be there.
Okay. Councilmember you?
Um, nothing more, thank you, Mayor, but I must say, I liked what the cup says. If you can't read it, it says, "2022, the one when the Camellia Festival was in May." So, this is wonderful. Looking forward to it.
And beautiful weather, right? So, okay, Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you. Well, I had the distinct pleasure of attending our Miss Temple City Ambassador Program event this past Saturday. Don, help me out here, the Miss Temple City, Rachel Chen.
Yes.
Right, I got it, I got it. But I want to congratulate all six young women who participated, they did a fantastic job, amazing talent, I mean, uh, I can't even imagine doing these things when I was that age. And, uh, these just, these young women were, I mean, you could have given, uh, Miss Temple City to all of them, really, in my mind, but, uh, Rachel Chen is Miss Temple City for this coming year, and there are five, uh, what do we call them? Prince, not.
Princesses.
Princesses, yeah. Uh, I want to be politically correct here, I don't, but, uh, good event, uh, put together really, really well, and, uh, you know, so, congratulations, everybody participating in that, helping out, it was at the First Baptist Church, kind of felt a little different not having Jim Walden around, but, uh, he, uh, as you know, has moved on, but the, the, the church is still in good shape, and, uh, we appreciate their, their continued association with the city.
I saw that, um, Jim was just appointed to, it's an assistant pastor's position.
Yeah, I saw that online too, and I was thinking, wait a minute, the reason he left is he was supposed to slow down. He's moved back, and now he's getting busier, seems like, oh, well.
So, he's doing well.
Yeah, he seems like he's doing well. And, uh, also looking forward to Camellia Festival. Uh, Don, what are you doing here? You should be doing something, aren't you? But, uh, good luck, uh, this, uh, this weekend, and we're all looking forward to a great event, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too am looking forward to the Camellia Festival in May, so I'm very glad that's happening. I also want to, again, congratulate the li, our library on its soft opening. Thank you, Ms. Jing Lee, for joining us there and tonight as well. And, and I, I do want to take that moment just to also say congratulations to Mayor Sternquist, because I know we've talked about the many years of effort you've, you've provided to, to council in term, in, in the form of the Library Commission, right? You, you were, you were on that for many years, and, and the persistent petitioning of funds from the supervisor, which is really what allowed it to happen. So, so, uh, thank you for your leadership on that, and this is the, the fruits of your, of your labor, um, being realized today.
It's very exciting, so, thank you all. Like I said before, you can't do anything without the support of your colleagues, and definitely had that, and to have a supervisor on board was huge, and Brian and everybody who participated in that is just, um, wonderful. So, come and enjoy your newly renovated library, and Jing does a fantastic job there. She's so excited to have this open, so, to see you is, brings me so much joy, so, thank you. Um, come out to the Camellia Festival, Don, what are the times for everything again?
Friday, 4 to, 10, 11.
Friday from 4 to?
You've got it, it's on the sheet.
4 to 10.
I've scattered it in the file.
It's here. Um, on the 21st, from 11 to 11, and May 22nd, from 12 to 9. So, a lot of opportunities to come out and just gather again, so, we're, we're very thrilled, and thank you for all your efforts with the Camellia Festival.
Mayor Sternquist, could I share one more thing?
Of course.
Yeah, so, uh, this past weekend, several of us were at the Contract Cities Conference in, in Indian Wells, and I did want to just share one quick thing. The, um, there was one seminar on the infrastructure LA bipartisan infrastructure law, which I know, uh, Councilmember you and, and I are both, we both work for the County Public Works, um, but the, the relevance of that in terms of how it might connect with us is, the county was out in force because they want to be the lead on a lot of potential regional projects, trying to, in their words, leverage and pool together, join a lot of cities, that their, their idea is, can we join a lot of cities with the county to pursue grant funding under the bipartisan infrastructure law? And the premise of that is that a lot of smaller cities and agencies like ourselves might not have the technical staff or resources to kind of meet the grant applications, or, to be able to put one together that's considered competitive. I, I'm not an expert on that, and I don't know if that's, that's true or not, but, um, I, I would suggest that on our end, we at least take a look at what we're able to do on our own, because there's obviously conditions attached to working in a pool, there's, there's risks attached with pooling together projects, uh, and, and I personally don't know all the conditions of, of, um, attached to the bipartisan infrastructure law, but, um, if we, I, I guess I, I would hate for us to miss out on anything that could potentially be used in Temple So, I guess that's sort of my message for, for our city manager, if he can maybe look at that, update us, there's multiple cycles, I know the initial cycle is very aggressive, uh, even the, uh, the timetable is difficult even for the County Public Works to meet some of the initial funding, uh, the, the grant application deadlines.
Did they offer any support?
There, there is, yes, they did. Although, what level that support entails is not something I can answer at this time. I, I get a feeling a lot of it is still coming together, so, I think they're just trying to establish a presence out there. Um, I know in talking with some of them who were at the conference, that they plan to reach out to the many COGS in the region. The, the idea is, if you can get the COG on board, then hopefully, cities will get on board, and kind of looking at it from a, from a regional lens. But, um, if there's any place for, for us, um, I would like us to be at the, to have a seat at that table to get some of that money.
And, I, I think one of the best things about attending the Contract Cities Conference is that you really do get to network with your fellow cities in the region and see what they're doing in regards to, you know, many of the issues that we're all facing, whether it's affordable housing, or infrastructure, just, just everything, and so it really just lets you know that you're not alone, and that our city doesn't operate in a silo, that we really do need to be on the regional front and pool our efforts together more as a San Gabriel Valley, I think, to really help us. You know, Brian, I did want to ask you, um, with the economic partnership, are we still utilizing that software program they had to help our businesses and, I forget what it was called?
Yes, uh, the PowerSite.
PowerSite.
Yes, um, it is a bit stale, to be quite honest, and we do have a new, uh, we do have a new executive director on board, we are actually having a meeting, uh, in a couple weeks, so, I think we're going to get some sense of some new priorities or things, so yes, um, to be very honest, it's, it's a bit stale at the moment.
Well, maybe if we can kind of, on some scales, share with them that it needs to be renovated, or?
No problem.
Okay. All right. Um, any additional public comments from, anything not in the standard agenda, Steve?
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Protem, and Councilmember City Staff, after listening to the report on how high the deductibles are for a city, I think it's kind of ridiculous that it's that high. I would have thought by now, legislation would have banned high deductibles. Even people that own cars and trucks have high deductibles, and I think it's time for the federal government and the state government to visit this and, and crack the whip on some of these insurance companies and make them wake up. They advertise how they take care of their people, but they don't do it, bottom line. This should have not gotten this way with high deductibles like this. If a city, part of our concitorium is having problems, and keeps having, and we have to keep supporting their misdeeds, I think there should be a winch there that comes in and investigates that city and cleans it up. I know cities in Orange County that have big problems, and the deductibles down there are just as high, and it's because some of these cities are not doing their job. The deductibles should have never gotten this way. Again, legislation needs to come forward and address the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right. I think that, is that it? All right, we are adjourned.